I've called a meeting to order. Roll call.
Trustee Heron. Trustee Montez. Trustee Sierra.
Here.
Trustee Silver.
Here.
Trustee Slover.
Here.
Vice President Hill.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here. All the trustees are here, so there's nobody here electronically. A moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need approval of the minutes for July 25th. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Question?
I just wanted to, I think that was the technical difficulties meeting, wasn't it? So, okay. Alicia, thank you for getting the modifications that I requested in there. Yeah, I mean, it was just impressive that you captured all of that with those technical difficulties.
Roll call.
Trustee Heron. Trustee Montez.
I have to say.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. Anyone here to address the board, citizens?
Bless you.
Yes, sir. Come to the front, please. State your name.
Thank you. Matt Wigington, Mayor of Peoria Heights.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, President Johnson, members of the board, Executive Director Cahill and staff. I was coming this evening to speak in appreciation for this board's continued investment in the parks of Peoria Heights. As the largest landowner by far in Peoria Heights, the Park District holds a special place in our community. The Park District is the caretaker of Peoria Heights's World's Most Beautiful Drive and the inheritor of Bill Rutherford's dream, that is, the Forest Park Nature Center. Tonight, I want to specifically thank you and your staff for the recent commitment of over $300,000 to the Indris Park and its effort to breathe new life into this hidden gem in Peoria Heights. The community outreach on this project was superb, and I truly appreciate the forum that was held at the park where I was, where I and my daughter was able to meet with staff, trustees Silver and trustee Slover, as well as vote on the proposed playground improvements. I also want to appreciate, show my appreciation, the resolve of the Park District addressing handicap parking in that accessible park. We in Peoria Heights look forward to further collaborations and intergovernmental agreements. And as I think as a team, we can continue to bring quality programming, accessible opportunities, and safe environments for all members of our community. My door is always open, and I've spoken with President Johnson in the past. And I look forward to finding areas where we can mutually accomplish our respective missions. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff reports. Executive Director.
Good evening, everybody. This is a super, super busy time, as everybody is aware. I want to thank staff for their continued efforts as we are not only trying to manage a full program calendar, but also are looking forward to 2026 and have begun our budget process. So, there's a lot happening right now, and we'll be talking to you in the next several meetings about the progress on those efforts. Before I ask for questions, I do want to introduce to everybody Officer Byron Glover. Byron is a, has been a part-time employee with us, but he is, has accepted a full-time position and will begin with us in September. He drew the duty tonight to be our security, so we wanted to take this opportunity for him to be able to introduce himself because I know that you get to finally go on vacation and we'll miss you the next meeting, I think, is what Chief told me.
That is correct. Hello, everyone. Officer Byron Glover. I'm happy to be here, especially considering that I started with the Park District as an explorer back in 2015, so it's a real return home, and I look forward to serving faithfully. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
President Johnson, I don't have a question. Just a congratulations to the full staff on another sold-out, second year in a row, Soul Fest. It was a great time. Really looking forward to seeing the revenue performance on there because it looked very busy, but nothing but appreciation. Everyone really enjoyed it, including myself.
Thanks.
Yes, well, thank you for that. And staff, as usual, you guys do work hard. All right.
President Johnson, I'd like to also commend the staff, especially for, you know, I Own the Streets program, the backpack giveaway. You were there, I saw Emily there, and it was like, it was a fantastic program. They did a great job. I think they really showed the community, you know, what Park District is all about. The backpacks were one, I'm sure it was very appreciated, but all the festivities that went around.
There were them, right.
Also, Treeland Park. All the work that's been done with Treeland Park is fantastic. It's really, really beautiful out there. I didn't realize it was such a nice place and such a key location, so thank you, everybody.
Yes, the community really enjoyed it, and the Fire Department with their help along with the Park District. It is a tremendous.
Really great collaboration, for sure. Thanks for coming out to support it.
Okay, so is Becky in the house tonight?
Our monthly reports before you, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them. Like Emily said, there's a lot going on right now with construction season as well as budget time.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Becky?
President Johnson, I'm sorry, one quick question. I should have asked Emily under her report. The pending state funding, have we gotten an update on how that funding, as it pertains to our capital projects?
So, we actually had a call earlier this week with the Deputy Director of DCEO and Leader Gordon Booth. We received direction on hopefully how we're supposed to access the general revenue funds, which are operational. The capital dollars, because they are being funded through Build Illinois, those are at the mercy of when bond funds become available. They did give us some sort of tips on how to make sure we were at the top of the list. We'll see if those work or not. Probably they give those tips to everybody who calls. But we are thankful to still just be, to still keep showing up in the budget because every time we're in there, it means those dollars haven't gone away. And we do hope that eventually they do come to us. Our first priority right now, though, is to get those operating dollars, which have some flexibility to them and do not have, the way it was made pretty clear to us, they do not have the opportunity for renewal to get those dollars to the Park District so that we can use them to support our work.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any committee reports? All righty, new business. 9A, Central State's six-month workforce profile submission. Receive and file. Anybody want to discuss that? That would be Ms. Swanson.
Yes, I'm happy to answer any questions. Before you is the six-month semi-annual performance report provided by Central State. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a quick comment. I know originally this had been requested by trustee Burchie and myself. And so, just thank you, Jenny. I expressed this to you before the meeting, but thank you for working with the team to getting this report over. As some background context, as we at the board have renewed the Central State media contract, we have realized that there have been growing opportunity for them to increase the diversification of their workforce. I've seen that they have made some strides in that area, and I appreciate all of the narrative that was provided as it pertains to helping us understand how they are continuing to prioritize that, especially in their marketing and outreach for employment. So, positive strides, and I'm looking forward to the next report. Hopefully, we see some more growth.
All right. Any other questions?
President Johnson, I do believe we should, we need a vote for the receiving file.
The receiving file, we do? Oh.
As recommended by council.
President Johnson, I'll move to receive and file.
Question. Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We need an approval, the outside grant application for charter park improvements. We discussed that and, is there a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Question. Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, 9C, City of Peoria, easements, John Gwynn and Martin Luther King Parks. Anybody want to go over a little bit? Anybody having questions on that? Probably get a motion?
If the staff wouldn't mind doing a brief overview on it, my computer's loading. It would help me.
Mike Friedberg is on his way to the microphone.
All right, so there are several easements here on the agenda. Now, at the board meeting on April 23rd of this year, staff presented recommendations to execute several easements in Martin Luther King Park, John Gwynn Park, Charter Oak Park, and at Safety Town. These are all concerning city projects that were basically expanding right-of-way or needing to use right-of-way and neighboring park space. So, because of the urgency expressed by the City of Peoria, we had presented to you to vote on easements with our proposed language. However, the city did not quite agree with some of that language. And so, we've spent the past few months renegotiating those. And so, these are the updated agreements. So, the main difference here is the indemnification clause. And the reason we needed this is because we have to answer to Pderma as our insurance risk management agency. And there was a little bit of confusion there. The city is self-insured, so they don't usually understand that we have to answer to someone else. But we've gotten through that, and these are the new languages. So, basically, there are a couple of permanent easements for Grange. There are temporary easements to allow construction. And these agreements have been reviewed by legal counsel, and the city is on board with them as well. So, we're recommending reapproving of these with new, correct language.
So, there was a disagreement about indemnity. Did we get to the point where we feel comfortable now?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Your motion?
President Johnson, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Question. Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. 9D, City of Peoria, easement, Bicycle Safety Town. Need a motion?
I'll second.
Question. Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. 9E, City of Peoria, easement, Charter Oak Park. Need a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Question. Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, contractual service agreement extension. Who wants to give, who wants to take that one?
Staff recommends extending ICMG's contractual support of the Peoria Park District Police Department and their placement of Mike Edelman in that role for at least another two months.
Okay, two months?
Mm-hmm.
Your motion?
Second.
President Johnson, I do have questions. Emily, it says right now, I don't know where the, oh, we don't have any viable candidates. Can you talk to us about the recruitment efforts so far?
Sure. So, it has been posted, multiple employment boards, actually across the country at this point. We have, we posted originally, we took it down, we have reposted it. At this point, we have not made changes to the job description. We are working through a strategic analysis of district police operations in connection with all of you as part of that process to really improve the capacity of our department. We believe there are some opportunities for organizational structure change of the department as well as potential job description changes. Those are all things that we will work through with you as part of our response to the needs of the district as well as a conversation during budget about how to allocate the police fund in order to best serve the community. Because we are midstream in that process, not only in the conversation with you as a board, but certainly with staff in looking at what that looks like, and we have just reached full capacity with our full-time officers, we are not making changes to that job description in this, like, in the middle of this, right? So, as we move through this, our intent would be to modify that job description effective with January 1 new budget, and that job description change may result in a different way or a different response to that job opening.
Do we think by, at the end of this two-month extension, we will?
To get to the end of the year.
Yeah.
But because we've been doing this in two-month increments, we didn't want to assume. And so, we're continuing that practice, and we will, if something changes, we'll change our request to you.
For sure. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Emily, I didn't quite catch it. Are we getting candidates for the chief position?
Uh, no new candidates since probably early July, I think, was the last time we saw a candidate, and they were not qualified.
Have we interviewed? We have.
We interviewed in the spring. We did not feel comfortable with the candidate pool that was made available to us. We did not extend an offer, and we have been very satisfied with the work of Chief Edelman in this contractual role, and it has really helped us not only with police operations, but with some public safety issues across the district as we've looked at our strategies as far as security cameras or access. It's also really improved our collaboration with city police. He provided notice to us today that all of our officers are going to participate in the fall corps training with the city, which is an opportunity we haven't been able to take advantage of for several years. So, that's a real capacity builder for us to be able to access those resources and that, that schedule of offerings. So, we are very pleased with where we're at, and we want to see his recommendations through before we shift course. That is not my understanding.
Only because it seems like that would be a conflict of interest.
Absolutely.
Yes, it would be. Definitely. Okay.
Going along with it, is there anything being done more with cadets? Because we just had one person who was in the cadet program that's now becoming a fullback.
That's part of, yeah, sorry.
No, I was wondering if we're looking at that as a more ongoing pipeline pillar of talk.
That's part of his recommendations to look at that. He was actually a part of that explorer program as he came through the system. And so, there is interest from our officers to implement or re-implement that program. And so, that's something that as we look to resource allocation in our 2026 budget, we'll be talking about the timeframe for what that looks like. That's not a quick process to reinvigorate that. But certainly, that's something that he has expressed interest in, recommends, and we agree that it makes a lot of sense for us to relook at that and make sure that that's a part of our long-term strategies to support police operations in the district.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Is, will there be a plan to sort of restart the recruitment process for the chief or a chief? Or?
When we, when we are able to put forth a recommendation to all of you for a structure, then our intent is that that will change the job description, right? That will change the focus of that chief, who right now we ask to be both an administrative leader and actively a part of our patrol response. And so, as we are moving forward in this process, we're trying to put likes with lights, likes, and be really cognizant of the fact that when you, when you rise to the level of capacity and experience to be a chief, it's been a while since you've been on the streets, right? So, we're asking our chief to do a lot of things, and we've seen in the past that that doesn't necessarily make sense, nor does it provide the best support for the larger department if your chief is out on patrol. So, we're looking at our available resources to look at the number of officers that we support, how we put together full and part-time, the role of security, as far as that monitoring of our spaces and places, what role technology plays, how we can collaborate to make sure that we are, we are providing as much coverage as possible and what then that revised role of a police chief should be. And those are all things that will come to you as part of our budget presentation.
It seems that when we do all that and then we, we put out a new job description, then we have to do something that lets people know this is new and different.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because otherwise they'll just go, oh, they haven't hired anybody yet.
Right.
One more question. You talked about technology. Do we have something that maps out the locations for the cameras that we have, someplace that we might be able to share with the board? Maybe the rest of you know where they're at. I just be interested to see what's that.
Sure. You can get your listing of the inventory.
How long is this process going to take with this chief? I mean, not the chief, with Edelman. How long is this? We gave two more months. How long has he been here now already?
He came to us in May, April, beginning of May, it was beginning of May.
So, how long is this process going to take with, with him?
So, as I said, we'll have recommendations to you in October and November as part of the budget process for how this looks.
He's in October and November or just October?
October is when we start the process. November is when we present the full budget.
Yeah.
I certainly do not recommend a gap between the hiring of a chief and the end of Edelman's contract. We are in midstream with a lot of work and a lot of efforts that you have authorized us to work on, including revision of conduct ordinance and expectations for police officers that he is an integral part of. And so, I would like to be able to see those things through with him. From my perspective, he's doing an outstanding job and has, and I believe that he has certainly provided information and education to all of you about the operations of a police department that we would be remiss if we were to stop that contract before we were ready to proceed with a long-term strategy for police operations in the district.
Well, I'm not saying stop the contract, but I'm also looking at our community and what's going on around when it comes terms to safety in our parks and making sure we have adequate, you know, police coverage and those type of things. And I'm just wondering how long this process is going to take. That's all I'm concerned about.
I think we all are, but his experience is helping us to create a stronger product and to ensure that we are, it speaks volumes to me that this is the first time in probably two years that we've been fully staffed, and in large part, that is because of the strategies that he is implementing and the recommendations that he is making. He, as I said just previously, he is providing and influencing some of the work that we're doing in other locations across the district to help with security and with coverage and making sure that even as far as planning for Gulf Learning Center, some of his recommendations for how we are preparing that facility to, to keep it safe in the off-hours, those are all things that because of his experience, that is influencing our work. And so, we certainly appreciate his inputs, and I want to make sure that we see his recommendations into implementation before he leaves us.
Yes. Trustee Slover.
Also important there is, once a new chief would be hired, there needs to be some kind of overlap so that that instruction could go on, and you can have a smooth transition.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, as the president, Mr. President has said several times, is that we need to make sure we're doing the right thing when it comes to public safety in our parks. And I think he said it would be a good move for us.
And that was a part of his original contract. That is a part of the scope of work, is for him to help with onboarding of a new chief.
I'm on now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All righty. 9G, the peer grown, MOU.
You need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to move on. Yeah, we do have to take a vote. Yes. Did we get a motion?
We did. I had trustee Silver making the motion. Trustee Heron, second.
Yes. Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover. Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Peoria grown. Need a motion that somebody want to talk about a little bit or?
So, this is step one of two in a process to move forward our relationship with Peoria grown. In November of 2022, trustees approved an MOU and a lease agreement for Peoria grown to lease space in our Treeland Pavilion in Treeland Park. They have an opportunity to access some state dollars to make improvements to that building and to support operational costs that would allow them to move to the lower level of the building, be able to operate more days in the week than they currently do, and still use the upstairs space on a limited basis for some of their larger group programming. In order to do that, they need a commitment from the Park District that we will work with them for up to the next 10 years. So, what you see here is a draft memorandum of understanding that has been reviewed by Peoria grown and approved as presented to you. We're asking you to approve that MOU. We will then negotiate the terms of a lease agreement that will be brought to you at next, our next board meeting.
Are we talking about downstairs, right?
Correct.
If I can make a comment, I'm actually excited about the opportunity by Peoria grown being able to utilize the downstairs, which already been occupied by PC, PC CEO Head Start's program. It would actually free upstairs for more community programming that we all talk about so much, especially trustees, Ron, President Johnson, and trustee Montez. And so, I'm excited to support this while continuing to address the food desert that's just growing. So, I'm going to go ahead and make an emotion to approve this.
And I'll second it, I think this is exciting.
Yes, I agree. Okay, roll call. Question? Question, yes.
So, I noticed in some of the grant material, they talk about having made a permanent spot that I know that is 10 years. So, I guess I want to really look for it, but then what's that mission of permanent?
I think those are capital improvements, so they will be making changes to the lower level. They have identified one of the classroom spaces, the larger one, that they would turn into a produce market that would operate like a produce market instead of like tables that you set up and you put buckets out and then you take those down. So, that permanency is really that, what shifts you from an operating cost to a capital one, and when they're making changes to the structure, that's what they're asking to do. They're not asking to tear down walls or anything like that, they're going to make improvements into the existing rooms that are already there, move their, their coolers, I think, from upstairs to downstairs, those kinds of things, but it is classified by the state as a capital improvement, which is allow, an allowable expense under that grant, and that's why they look for that long-term commitment so that you don't make a capital improvement and then give up on it, right? And they've invested dollars that don't have impact. They are.
Given that date of that building?
Well, I don't think, they're not making structural improvements, I don't, I mean, we are going to, as a park district, will address, there's a couple of accessible issues that we want to make sure that we address on the, just to get in and out of the building, but anything that they do, I assume most of it will be cosmetic, but it will be thinking about shelving and, you know, how, yeah, they have coolers, so refrigeration, they may look to purchase another cooler because if you buy in a higher volume, then you're able to reduce costs on that purchase of produce, but ultimately, their dollars will be spent on making it, quite honestly, not feel like a classroom, but feel like you're walking into a space that has that market feel, so people want to come and, come and make that part of their regular schedule. Correct, so we are working with them to identify an access point for a produce delivery truck, which would be different from the public access, which is the one there that's right by the parking lot.
I do, I'm sorry, just one more quick thing, I want to express appreciation for Emily, she was very intentional with Peoria Grown in support of helping, without this partnership, they wouldn't be able to secure this additional funding, and additionally, extend gratitude to Julie Ryan and her board for continuing the partnership with the park district. Some of you may already know, but this isn't something that we are owed in any manner, and the fact that they are continuing to engage with the park district as a partner to address the community's growing needs speaks volumes to how they look at us and how we value them.
Well, I'm glad we can provide this kind of service and still continue to service to the community.
Mm-hmm.
It's a wonderful service.
All right, any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Herron?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slover?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries, and it is, I think, in behalf of picking back on trustee Sierra and some of the other trustees, that, that area does need this really bad, I know, with this type of food desert that we have there.
Grocery desert there, this would be it all.
Yes.
Get fresh produce.
Fresh, that is correct.
Wouldn't have that, so I wouldn't like that.
I do too, I like that idea. So, thank you all for your, for your support on that issue. Okay, we have some calendar consent items, 10A Indris Playground, and 10B, the proposed for Giant Oak Park Fence. Does anyone wants to take one out separately, or do you want to go ahead and make a vote?
Go ahead and-
Move to approve calendar consent.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Herron?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
I'm sorry, I was opening the doc, can I ask one clear, I know this is out of order, so I apologize. We didn't have an actual signature on 10B, the EEO form, we just had the typed-out name, and so, is that in compliance?
On the Giant Oak Park Fence?
Giant Oak.
I mean, Giant Oak, not Giant Oak, I'm sorry. Giant Oak.
Got it, I'm sorry for being out of order, I just wanted that clarification. Aye.
Okay.
Excuse me, we had gotten trustee Herron, trustee Montez, and then trustee Sierra, correct? Okay, thank you. Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slover?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Is that just for both of them? Okay. Pending business? Anybody want to comment on communications? Okay, other business. I do have something for other business. Becky maybe can help me with this question. The school district, school board, well, school district, we have a contract with them, with the, at the stadium, how long is that now? How much time do we still have on that?
I believe that ends in 2036.
Oh, it's 2036, that we still have this working relationship there?
Yep.
With our programming, so we good to 2036.
Yep.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any, any other business anybody want to talk about or bring up?
Well, I just wanted to compliment the park staff, the park crews, because I've been critical in the past of the conditions of some of the entrances and flower beds in some of the parks, and I just think that some of these areas are just looking outstanding.
Yeah, Bradley is too, I noticed that.
Talk about Grandview and the Riverplex, Columbia Park, Bradley Park.
The Noble Center.
Dead Wilder, the Noble Center, certainly.
Really looking.
I think that some of these, the staff have just really gone out of their way.
They have, yeah.
You know, to me, a, an entrance to either a park or to a building, given that-
That's the first impression.
What our expertise is, should be a, a very welcoming appearance and should pull you really into the facility, into the park, and I think that they've really done a knockout job in a lot of the areas. I've, I've gone to quite a few recently, and this is the time, I mean, even this late in the summer, the, the flowers are just looking outstanding, and that takes work. They don't, if you don't take care of them, they just fall apart, and by this time, particularly by this time, but things are looking really good, so my compliments to Jake and Ryan and the staff.
And the Playhouse, I mean, that looks great, also here at the, have we done anything there anymore with the theater, play, players' theater?
Mm-hmm.
On that, yeah, and Proctor Center, have you been down there lately?
I've driven past it, they, they're not planning quite like they did, but they do have-
Yeah, she said she was going to be getting on, yeah, she was going to be talking about-
We're doing a lot of perennials there, and there's some bulbs, so it is the set time of the season where it's so hot.
Doesn't quite have the pop, a lot of the, the annuals give.
That's a good point, I certainly wanted to, thanks for bringing that up, they love this.
They love Sandy.
Thank you. All right.
I've got just one.
Yes.
So, I have, for several years, been promoting transparency to the public and outreach, and I just want to thank the staff, I think we, this year, we really, we've like, we've taken a leap forward in that, and I think the Chartwell Program, the, you know, the having 30 people there is wonderful, and it continues to, you know, I think the community has to sort of go, oh, they want our opinion, and it sort of, sort of has to be something that people grasp and hear about, but, you know, we had our program committee on pickleball and tennis, which was a new concept to invite the, the players, you know, into the conversation, and it was a really good conversation. It'll be more difficult, I think, to, for outreach in areas that are more, don't have organized groups that, that work with them or that, that, but anyway, it'll just be a, a different challenge and just we'll have to look at different ways to, to do the meetings, but I, I think it's really great, and I thank you for not giving up and, and trying to get the input of the community so that when we do things, people are going to go, oh,